Hello, everyone. Nice seeing everyone. I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, July 19th, at 7:42 PM. I'll accept a motion to open our meeting for tonight.
So moved.
Second? Second. Okay. I'll take roll call and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave?
Here.
Mr. Cora?
Here.
And I am here as well. If you are able, I ask that you stand so we can salute our flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everyone. Nice seeing everyone. I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, July 19th, at 7:42. Uh, I'll check with SMAC, just a minute. That wasn't on your end, that was on that end? Yes, please, Mr. Cora.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, we have some obituaries to deal with. One is Walter Under, who was a businessman in Stoughton, and he was the big bus guy for the town of Stoughton. He did all the buses for the schools. He did the interstate coaches for us when we went on track meets or football games and stuff. He passed away the other day at 80 years old. And to his family, who is, his wife, Donna, they were married 59 years, which is pretty commendable. And he's survived by his three children. He has Michael, Richard, and, um, geez, Tracy. He was a lifelong resident of Stoughton. He was an avid tuna fisherman. Anybody who fished tuna knew Walter Under. So I gotta tell you, if you needed to know something, you went to him. He'd tell you what to use, how to line. He was president of the Cape Cod Tuna down in, uh, down the Cape. He was president of that for years. And he was a very colorful man. He said what he had to say and he wasn't afraid to say it. And to his family, we'll send out our prayers and our thoughts. I also have one more. Jerry McDonald, who is the chairman of the Stoughton Conservation Commission, lost his mom. And her name was Ruth. And she had, with her husband, Bill, who was also on Stoughton Conservation. I served with him on that board. And he was on there a long time before I got on there. And they had six children, and his mom was like the quintessential mom. She raised the kids and she sewed and knitted. And she was a wonderful lady. She was also an aide at the West School till 2005, when she retired. So we can send out to them real Stoughton people, Jerry and his wife, Ann. They, we all graduated together in '79, so Stoughton kids and losing icons again. So keep them in your prayers and we'll have a small moment of silence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cora. Before we go forward, I would like to read, in accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until July 15th, 2022, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. To join via Google Meets, it is meet.google.com backslash QTR dash F E N X dash E O Z, phone number 1-650-735-2901, PIN number 967-038-913-POUND. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestream at www.stoughton.org. And recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town meeting website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times and or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. I will now open with citizens' comments, please. Are there any citizens' comments? Yes, please step forward, state your name and precinct, please. Mr. DeFaleese.
Madam Chair, I just want to remark on the observation I have here tonight. You guys are so spread out, I don't think I've seen it before. I assume you still are all talking to one another. Okay.
Yes, social distancing. Excuse me for one second. Deborah, would you mind turning down the AC? I can barely hear. I don't know if anyone else is experiencing. Uh-huh. Oh, I was too. Yes, Mr. DeFaleese?
Okay, thank you. I had a few questions, basically, uh, excuse me, related to the fire station.
Mr. DeFaleese, this is citizens' comments, and the purpose for citizens' comments is residents of Stoughton to address issues with the Select Board that need immediate attention and cannot wait until the next meeting, because we would like to put it on the agenda if doable. Anything else, Mr. DeFaleese?
Oh, I guess I don't understand. Well, I think this is something, obviously, that, you know, should have been done, I would say yesterday, but it should have been done years ago. And it seems that we're in a stalled position on the fire station. So I think it's something that needs to be talked about.
Mr. DeFaleese, you're out of order. And we're not at a stalled position.
So what am I supposed to do? Not ask questions?
No.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may through you?
Sure, Mr. McCrisky.
Ed, the problem with what we've had, and I've been saying this myself, because in 2015, I made the motion to enact citizens' comments. And the purpose of citizens' comments was to have a tool for the residents to come before the Board, you know, and it was something of a need that couldn't wait for the next scheduled meeting, so that we could look to the town manager and say, would help this resident get the police department down there tomorrow? Get DPW or have the fire safety officer? Something that needed immediate attention, all right? You have a question, if you would like to schedule it to be on the agenda and ask and talk, but you made a comment already that's not true. We're not in a stalled position with the fire department. There are people in the community, unfortunately, some people sit on committees, that are an arm of town meeting, not an arm of the town of Stoughton. And they're spreading false information that with $3 million over budget and this is wrong and that's wrong, and they're, they're not, they're not correct in that statement. They're trying to create a statement that scares the residents, and this is my opinion, that scares the residents to thinking that the Select Board and the staff of the town hall don't know what they're doing and we're pulling the y, the eyes, the wool over the eyes of the residents, which is not the case, okay? This is a political move by these people. These are people that have fought the fire station while also saying that they're for it. But yet they come up and make these statements that, you know, that the road was on private property, the contaminated property, there's all these things. So the more that we allow people to come up here and put up this information, not sitting with what the terms of citizens' comments were. You know, they weren't meant or intended to be a soapbox for people to get up and ask a 15-minute question and expect an answer, sitting there. You know, the whole idea was to give the residents that need the Board's attention on something important, you know, to have that voice. So it, you know, I have no problem talking to you that, about that at another time and answering any questions. But if we do this with every question that comes before the Board, we need to start standing up for what this was intended to be. And if we don't, it just, our meetings go late enough as it is, you know? And I'm not trying to say that the residents don't have a right to speak, but these questions, if you want to come to the, for the Board and residents want it to, then you put it on the agenda, and the chair, I know, would give the appropriate amount of time to ask questions.
Okay, uh, thank you. Over the years, I've never heard that explanation, but thank you for the explanation.
Well, you know what it is, Ed? People just kind of let it go to something else, something else, something else. And then it was, they never looked at the actual motion that was made then. And if they did, they would know it was made for a different purpose. But again, you know, and then it just takes on a world of its own if you don't hold it to what it was supposed to be, so.
Okay. I do want to thank you because you did answer one of my questions, was about the $3 million, if that was so. So you answered one of my questions.
Yeah. It's an incorrect statement. We're not over budget, okay? We still have, if we needed to, we still have very comfortable space to borrow additional money that was granted to the, to the Select Board, okay? But again, people are trying to flip information. It's not fair to the residents, and I'm not going to stand by here and let people do that. It's not, you know, and it's just some of these people want to use that for whatever reason in the wrong way. They should be happy we're getting a fire station. Is it the perfect plan? I think everybody would like it to be a little bit better. But it's going to meet the needs of the fire department for 50 years, okay? And everything was done on the up and up. It was voted at town meeting. It went through all the hearing process, and it was voted by the residents. So that's...
Thank you. You're right. We're all, we are all looking forward to that day.
Right.
Finally.
So let's not, let's not listen to the people that are just pointing out their own personal agenda for false information, Ed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. And thank you, Mr. DeFaleese. Any other citizens' comment? Yes, please step forward, say your name, Peter, and your precinct.
Peter Montresco, 587 Kent Street. I'm just going to follow up with a question I asked a couple of week meetings back about the Pratt's Court Road not being blacktop in front of the pumping station.
Did we receive an answer?
There's, there might be a wetland concern in that stretch there, I was told, that the, when they pull the line out, that's why that can't be paved, like in when some subdivisions, people have a 20-foot pave, then they have a, a compact gravel driveway, and then the pavement picks up again just before the house. I was told it can't be paved because of that.
Well, I'm going to take a little issue with that because if it's a wetland issue, it's, it's half in a lake. The dike between, that holds Pratt's Court is blacktop. It's just that small piece, so it doesn't make any sense because it's a wetland issue.
I, I'm just telling you that, that's some of the concerns I got.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, I will open for Select Board comments, and I'll start with Mr. Gito.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for giving me five minutes to discuss the town of Easton's website and sample of their long-range planning. All towns and cities perform the same basic functions but don't always have the same methods of planning for and tracking the work and the money. Some communities make that information available to its citizens in a simple fashion. I think Easton is one of those communities, and I've sent out some information to, to each of you. We've talked about the need for citizen involvement, but we can't expect our citizens to be involved if they don't know what's going on. Knowing what's going on isn't just Facebook posts. It's about setting goals, real planning, funding, direction, and accomplishment. Involvement requires real knowledge. So how did I focus on Easton? It was by pure chance. I noticed that Easton was doing a lot of major road maintenance. I wanted to know what they did to plan, fund, and execute such major work. I went online to find the names and phone numbers of departments so I could call them, and all of a sudden, all the information I was looking for was right in front of me. I mean, literally, I was amazed. Here was material I'd expected Stoughton to have, but was told Stoughton didn't have it available. I wanted this information, and I think we did, for Stoughton so we could make informed capital planning decisions. And right in the next town, there was all this material that anyone in that town could get. Right next door was a community that had information and systems in place, not only, to not only manage on a day-to-day basis, but to track its progress over time and to communicate to its citizens. So I invite the viewers, and all of us, to visit Easton's website and see all the financial and planning documents, the projects, the goals, that the Selectman and Board of, the Select Board and Town Manager have agreed to work on during the year. All this information is easily available. You can easily see where Easton is planning to move itself, when in the past, Easton's money had been spent, and over the past decade or more, what work has been accomplished. Departments have provided very readable reports of their plans and accomplishments. Let me give you two examples. I think I gave them to the Board, but I think that it would be important to, to mention them. Easton's DPW road maintenance program is documented, documented online all the way from 2013. Through 2022, it has spent $8.4 million and repaved over 133 miles of roads, on average 13.3 miles per year. Easton has a yearly plan with projected costs, a report of actual accomplishments and costs, all available for anyone to read and to see those roads on a map. Check it out. Stoughton needs this kind of information, and I expect we will get, begin to get it. The second item is the website itself. It's easy to use. It's intuitive. It has all, all its documents in one place. And this is important. Documents are the reports we pay for at town meeting. There are the Department and Board and Committee reports that are produced. There are the meeting agendas and the meeting minutes. All of this information that they have is also searchable. It seems we should be able to afford a system like Easton's. There's no way to make good cost comparisons, but Easton operates its IT program at about $250,000 a year, and Stoughton for about $560,000 a year. Easton's total budget is $94 million. Stoughton's is $112. We should at least look at the difference. So to wrap it up, I think we have some close-to-home examples of what we should be expecting to have for information to make decisions, and ways of presenting that information in a more user-friendly manner. It could be a win-win situation. For us, better opportunities to make informed decisions. For citizens, opportunities to learn more about the town and to spark more involvement. So I'd suggest we might want to think about scheduling a meeting on this topic later on. Thank you very much for allowing me to take the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gito, and we're not going to ignore your comments. And I do know that Mr. Tisdale and his team are working, it's in, it's in queue, I call it "in queue," and maybe you want to share a little more about that, Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Gito. I also looked at the Easton website, and I do agree that the, the way they upload and manage their documents is very organized. It's a very good, user-friendly website. The other part that I'm, that makes a lot of that all work is, is their online permitting program that they have. That actually organizes the data itself in a way. So that's something that the town is moving forward with. Before I even became in this role, I'd been looking at different online permitting platforms and licensing platforms to kind of make the process as easy as possible for people doing work in Stoughton. And that, that to me is my number-one goal for the website. The document manager is actually a great thing. Trish, our, our IT director, she's also looking at some easy ways to search through our existing information on the website, because there is actually a lot of good information. It might just not be as easy to find as, say, maybe the town of Easton. But my plan in the future for the online permitting is actually to do a quick presentation in front of the Select Board as the first point of contact, and then getting other groups to buy in on it. I think there's, what, 351 communities in, in Massachusetts, there's over 200 using online permitting software, Easton being one of them. And that's one of the platforms we're looking at.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Let's move right along. Mr. McCrisky, do you have any Select Board comments?
No, ma'am, I'm afraid tonight to do that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move right along to Vice Chair Cave.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Cora?
I have none, too, to round out.
Oh, well, great. I did want to share something, what I received from Senator Timothy, Walter Timothy. It's regarding the MBTA Quiet Zone Compliant Intersection in Stoughton. And I know Mr. Tisdale and his team and the Select Board have been working on that for some time, but it looks like it's moving forward, it's in the hands of the governor now. So Mr. Timothy recently moved that the proposed new text be amended in Section 2F and Item 6720, 2261, by adding the following words, "Provided further that not less than $2,275,000 shall be expended for the design and construction of Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority commuter rail quiet zone. Compliant intersections in the town of Stoughton, provided further that not less than $2,200,000 shall be expended for this signalization of the Canton and School Street intersections in the town of Stoughton." Mr. Tisdale, can you please share a little more information, like give some historical, put this all in context? What does this mean for us?
Yeah, for those of you who aren't familiar with what a quiet zone is, essentially, it would be a zone where, if you look at the downtown, there's three or four intersections that cross the railroad tracks. For each one of those intersections, the reason why the trains blow the horn is for safety, to alert people that may be in the intersection, pedestrians, cars, you know, things like that. If you put certain measures in place, like four quadrant gates, certain geometric improvements to the intersection, certain sensors, things like that, you meet the MBTA specifications for a quiet zone, so the train doesn't have to blow its horn. First of all, the first benefit is it's, it makes the intersection safer, which is the number-one goal. But second is the train doesn't blow the horn, which means development along the train tracks can increase. Right now, there's, there's hindrance, hindrance to build along the train tracks with better uses, because it takes things like triple pane, quadruple pane windows and thicker walls to block the noise out, and it still doesn't do the job. So you can't get the highest and best use along the tracks. So that's the intent of what a quiet zone is. And obviously, the Canton-School Street intersection is one of those, one of those intersections affected by that.
Thank you so much. That is such good news, it's moving forward. I'm open to town manager comments.
Thank you. I do have a few. Paula Newt, the treasurer collector, issued the FY22 Water, Sewer, and Trash Demand Bills today. The man, the demand bill is due on July 26, 2022. If the FY22 Water, Sewer, Trash Demand Bill is not paid in full by the due date, a water, sewer, and trash lien will be placed on the FY23 Third and Fourth Quarter Real Estate Tax Bill in January of 2023. All unpaid water, sewer, and trash bills accrue interest at a, at a 14% interest rate. Again, from Paula Newt, issued, they issued the FY23 First Quarter Real Estate and Personal Property Tax Bills on June 30, 2022. These tax bills are due on August 1, 2022. All unpaid first quarter taxes will accrue interest at a 14% rate on the first quarter's due date. Also, everybody knows about the, the weather we're having this week. You know, it's pretty, gonna be pretty hot out there. It's a good beach week, but it's not good for some people who don't have cooling capabilities in their homes. So we have two cooling centers opened, Wednesday through Friday. Stoughton Library, Council on Aging. The library will be Wednesday and Thursday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Council on Aging, Wednesday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thursday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Friday, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Also, good news from our Meyer Insurance that we have. We got our rewards credit for the year due to all the trainings and things like that that the, you know, the department heads take, and it's really kind of quarterbacked by Reggie. She really pushes us to take these trainings, which is good, because it equates to the $33,000 credit we got on our insurance premium this year. So that's good news. And that's it. I was just gonna add, I was gonna add something about the fire station, but I think Joe pretty much covered it. But generally, if anybody has any questions about the fire station, I got an open door. I think everybody knows me well enough. I, there's no information being hidden. I'd be, I welcome any meetings with any, anybody from the public residence, members of Boards or committees to come into my office and discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. Moving right along to our next agenda, that is reappoint Select Board member Joseph McCrisky to Norfolk County Advisory Board. There's no public hearing required. It's a Select Board choice, and it's a seat allocated to certain designated Select Board, as far as I know.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So thank you very much and congratulations, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our next agenda item, that is constable application for Ulysses Silva. If he is in the audience, would you please step forward to our table, introduce yourself? We have your paperwork and application, so, yes, it's nice to meet you. Please have a seat. So I would ask someone to take the lead on this, if you would like, regarding the background and requirements.
Sure.
Vice Chair Cave?
Mr. Silva, pleasure to meet you, and thank you very much for applying to the town. The police department, we received information from, I'm not sure what you've received or not, but I'll give you some good news here. The police department has responded with, they have completed a background check and have located no concerns for disqualification. We've received letters from, I think, two attorneys. The first was Anna Carla Fitzgerald, supporting your appointment to this position, as well as Valcy Ribero, Ribero, um, he's in Fall River, or she is, once again endorsing your appointment to this position. Personally, on my behalf, I've read through the application as well, and, and I've got no, no concerns. But I guess we should open this to the rest of the Board, if they have any questions.
Do my fellow Board members have questions for Mr. Silva? Mr. Cora?
Mr. Silva, have you done this before at all, or is this their first time? Mr. Silva, have you done this before at all, or is this their first time?
This is my, my first time.
Is there any training that you get, take, or will take, to know how to do this, or is it just something you learn as you go?
Yes, I have friends who work in City Constable. The guys are training me for a couple of weeks ago. That's right.
I see no further questions? Oh, sorry, Mr. McRiskey? Mr. McRiskey, you had question?
Yes. This was basically put together, and I can see where names were plugged in here that were missing. And we went through this a long time ago, and we, the list is small, because it should be on a need basis. And do you have contracts with any attorneys that they've said that, I saw their general letters that said, "You're a nice guy," and they would consider using you?
Yes, I have a contract.
But why, why do you need a constable appointment?
Yes, because, make a history money, because I have a contract for the lawyers for...
Contract for who?
For, for the lawyer gave me, contract forgive the letters, because a lot of people don't go in the court. That's right.
Okay, so he, do you, how come we don't have a copy of the contract?
This, I, I need a constable force, because I need to sign the contract to give the letters, sorry.
Okay, so if, and, and so how many times is this, this lawyer say he's gonna use you? Is this a full-time job?
Yeah, full-time.
Full-time?
Yeah, this, I have a true lawyer in, in City Constable. I have a, some of you too, have a friends, have a group, the Constable, the guys are needing me to work with together, too. That's why I need a constable. I try over there, but the guys tell, no, you try the constable.
Why did they say no in another town?
Because this, I live, here is Stoughton, I need to take the license here.
Okay, so where is the majority of your work gonna be?
Yeah, the guys tell me you work here. Anyway, I need the license first, I work in Mass, every count.
All right, well, see, there's, that's what I'm looking for, is that if we're putting a constable position in, you know, it's, most of the work should be done in the town of Stoughton. So we give you a constable badge because you live here, but then you're gonna take that and work other places.
No, I, I have a lawyer here in Stoughton. She gave me, I have a letter for her. She have a job for me. I have another lawyer, the School Street, too. The guys gave me, give the, the license first, I give you a job, too. In Stoughton, I have a true lawyer give me a job. And the Val Ribeiro, lives at Fall River, she gave me, too. She have an office here in Stoughton, I think so.
Well, if, if somebody from Fall River needs a constable, they should be looking down Fall River to get the constable, not somebody from Stoughton to be a constable. You know, it, I, I just, I've been cautious over these in the years, because at one point, some of my colleagues, remember Scott's already nodded his head, is that we had people here that were coming into Stoughton getting a constable's appointment, and then very little work being done in Stoughton. And, you know, it's, we put our name on that. That's, that's a position we appoint. And, I mean, some of these names are even tough for me to read.
Because I have a...
You have Joel Fishman's name here. How do you know Joel?
Joel, this lawyer, the School Street.
Okay, and what's your affiliation with Joel?
The guys are, send me, I go over there, I, I work in the house for him for construction. I fix the house, the guys are, I tell him, oh, I need, I try for take my constable license. The guy, you give, have a job, I work for you. The guys, okay, you try, that's why I signed for you.
Okay.
The lawyer here at Stoughton.
I can't read the next name that's on Faxon Street. Somebody with Faxon Street. And does it say Du Brazil?
I think so, for Brazil.
Or is that Louisa Fernandez on Porter Street?
Yeah, for she, for the...
Okay, that's not her house, though, right? Has she lived there, 22 Porter Street?
For, she, this have a store here.
She has a business there?
Business here.
Okay, so that's not, is she a Stoughton resident?
I think so, but...
Oh, that's not good enough for me, I think so.
President.
All right, and I can see Evaldo Vera, 305 Highland Street, Arthur Texera, 78 Pearl Street, 17 Lorraine, I can't make out, Javi Prid Olivera. There's a couple names here that I can't...
I have, I think so.
Fall River. There's one that's got a 774, there's, I, I just, I don't, I, I'm sorry, but I, I won't support this application. But my colleagues, whatever.
So, Mr. McRiskey, the requirement is to have five citizens of the city of town where you reside. He resides in the town of Stoughton. So the first name is Johnson, he lives in Stoughton.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning the names. Some of them, I, I mean, I see one here, that's, it's listed as Stoughton, 22 Porter Street, that's a business. All right, so I don't know the relevancy to that.
So I'm just trying to count up if he has five, because he's...
Oh, no, he's got the names.
He does have more. He has more than five.
Oh, I'm not questioning the amount.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's just the need, the actual need. So it, if, if there were attorneys that was gonna give us a letter that said, you know, upon his appointment, I will be signing the contract with him to utilize it in accordance with the area. This is a Norfolk County license. There's an attorney that's from Fall River that says he's gonna use him, that's a different county. So it doesn't even, it's not relevant. It doesn't have any authority there. So that person is gonna have a badge that says "Constable," issued by this board. I think it's important that we know how it's gonna be utilized. I, I'm not convinced here that there's a real big need. So it's just me, just speaking for my, you know, I've been here and seen these, and I don't want to see us go back to the wrong way.
Yes, Mr. Silva, and then, Mr. Carrera? Do you have something?
Yeah, because the lawyer here, the Washington Street, she tell, she needed one Brazilian to, to Constable, living in Stoughton, because she have a lot of process, never give the letter. That's why she signed, give me the, have the information, because I know she for, for years. That's why give me a, a letter, because I need it, because she have a job for me, that's why.
You wouldn't happen to have the attorney online, would you?
No, but we have a letter from her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because she needed, because she have three offices, that's why.
Okay, okay, I, I found it.
Yes, Stoughton have thousands and thousands of Brazilians, that's why.
Well, "will be pleased to utilize his service" is different than "we will be using his service" in that letter. Okay, so I read it, I guess, differently. "We will be pleased," but I mean, it, and then if there's a contract here somewhere, or somebody says, "Upon this, I will enter into contract," that would be something a little different, but I don't see that here. And again, this is one here is working as well, it's great, and "I and many attorneys will be very pleased to utilize his service." But again, we're talking about...
Going into contract.
Work for attorneys. So I mean, I could start up a business, go out and buy a, an Uber, and I know I'll probably get some business, but will I get the business is another thing. I mean, this is, it, it doesn't say that we will be using his service. "Pleased to," and other attorneys, and, well, who are other attorneys? I mean, I've heard an attorney from Fall River. That's, it, it versus knowing the limitations of the constable appointment, and saying that we, you know, somebody from Fall River, unless that person has business in Stoughton, you know, but we don't know that, but we're being asked to, you know, to, to give somebody the, the authority to carry a badge in a wallet. And I kind of look at it a little different, I guess, maybe.
Let me hear from Mr. Carrera, yes.
I, I hear what Joe's saying, and I remember being involved in something that came before when I was on a previous board. And we gave out a constable license, and somebody was out of town, misusing that constable license, and kind of blew up, and, and it got hot, and it, and it ended up in front of this board. And, you know, it was almost like an inquisition, but it had to be, it had to be retracted. And then the policy changed, and we got a constable policy, we narrowed it down, and that was, Joe, you remember, that's when they dissolved the, the auxiliary cops, yeah.
And we, we took...
And then everybody became a constable, and then it, it just, it got out of hand, and then we had to narrow the field down. And through you to that gentleman, Mr. Fishman, doesn't live on School Street, he, his business is on Canton Street. That's his, the house down there on the right-hand side, so I, I was trying to know when Joel moved, because I know Joel very well.
Yeah, Canton Street.
So it's Canton Street.
Street for the church.
So, Mr. Silva, based on the comments, what we're saying is actually, we need a letter from attorneys that said, "You're gonna do business in Stoughton." That's what we're looking for.
Okay.
So, anything...
The type, the type of work.
The type of work, yes.
If, you know, if you've got two attorneys you're gonna work for, what I would like to see is that attorney say that, "I'm gonna be using this gentleman for service on evictions, on, you know, court cases that, you know, that need the service to, you know, whether it's a divorce or something like that, and people have to be served a description of what you're gonna be doing." Because the applicant's reason for desiring appointment, you put down extra money. Not that you're gonna go to work for attorneys, and you're gonna serve civil process, you know, to aid, you know, the attorneys in their duty to represent the courts. Extra money doesn't tell me anything. It's, you know, I mean, it, this is, again, this, to me, is a very serious thing for anybody that sits on this board, to allow you to carry a badge with a town of Stoughton identification.
And the other, the other thing, Madam Chairman, I was always under the, under the mystique, the, the information that if we gave the constable license, Norfolk County was like the border, that you didn't, you didn't go outside there, because we're a town, we're Norfolk County, and so if he wanted to do something in like, as far as Rantam or out to Brantree, there in Norfolk County, but that's how I looked. I didn't, I didn't think we were gonna go Plymouth, Bristol, and stuff, I mean, that's what I thought the badge said.
They could, though, Scott. The attorney from Fall River could look for a, a constable in Stoughton to serve somebody in Stoughton.
Right.
On a civil suit. So they could do that. But, you know, I'd like to see the letter from that person stating that, "At times, I need a constable in Stoughton, you know, and I can't find one." So that shows the need of that attorney, you know, and the same thing with the others, you know, if somebody else says it, I'd just like to let, you know, hear it from them, why we need to put another constable on the street. I could almost argue, we have two others in town, they can use them. You know, I mean, but, so that's, that's where I just, the extra money, and I, everybody wants to earn a living, and I don't begrudge anyone from wanting to take another job to make a couple bucks, which is great, but this is a little bit different, because we're authorizing somebody to walk around with a badge in their wallet. And, you know, even some of that, if they're not trained properly, or they do something outside, not that anybody ever will, but we have to, we have to think of litigation all the time, as to what could come back on us. And all I want is a clear explanation. I would have no problem, myself, talking to the applicant to help him in what I think is needed. I can't speak for the, my colleagues on the board, but, you know, and maybe some, even another one of the constables here could help him as well, you know, but...
Would you be open to that type of, I call it mentoring, or type of advice?
Aye.
To help you get to the next step?
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, yes.
I think what you said, we need letters from attorneys that say specifically they have a need for his services, and if he is appointed, they will utilize their services. Where are their services needed? You know, what area do they need this help, that they don't have in Stoughton now? I don't mind giving somebody the, the authority to do that, if there's a need for it, and it's a need that we're not meeting. Maybe the other two, you know, are busy, and they can't do it, their job prohibits it, whatever, but if we have a Stoughton attorney that needs them, and another one in Fall River says they need somebody in Stoughton, I, I just wanna have, the applicant's reason for desiring appointment, extra money is just not enough to say, "Okay, here, here's a badge, have at it." So, like I said, I, I'm probably the most vocal on it, so I gotta think that maybe it's just my concerns, you know, over what we've had happen in the years past. So just to make sure that, you know, when we're putting somebody out there, there's a need for it, you know, because the only other thing we can do is pull it in, and for a revocation hearing, you know, if something will go bad, and knock on wood, we've never had that before, so.
It sounds to me...
Because if we lighten up this process, you know, we're gonna have more people coming in, just saying, "Hey, I wanna get one like that."
Well, we're not trying to do that, but from the expression in the comments from Mr. Silva, it sounds like he's new at this, and he wants to learn, he wants to learn the right way, and it would be nice if you could connect him with someone.
I, I, I would be, I would be glad to. If, if you want to just write your name and number down on a piece of paper and give it to our secretary, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
All right.
You do?
Sure.
All right, what's in here, too? That's right, too. That's right, too, the, okay, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we...
Do you have this, um, people or constables in the town already?
Yeah.
We only, we have three in the town. So, if there's any...
Yeah, no, no, I'll do what I can, and I'll give them their name as well.
That would be very helpful.
And we can put this on the next agenda?
Yes.
All right, again, and, okay. No, I just want to cross the Ts, dot the Is, that's all.
I understand that completely. Okay, moving right along to our next agenda item, is the Common Vic application, Pearl Street Nutrition at 5 Pearl Street. And I asked Mr. Carrera to read into our records, the public hearing notice into public record, and give us a little information.
Madam Chair, may I have the pleasure, the honor of, of reading this into the record?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I yield.
If the owner would step forward in the meantime, and we'll be right with you shortly. Yes, Vice Chair, Kavy.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Town of Stoughton, notice for hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on July 19 to consider the application of Pearl Street Nutrition LLC for a Common Vicular License at 5 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing will be held at 8:00 p.m. in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dleblanc@stoughton-mae.gov per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority. For, actually, should we, we should enter the public hearing, right?
Motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
So the report's back from our various town departments are all in support. There's no objections from the police, fire, Board of Health, Building Department, Treasury, or Water Department. The Board of Health's only comment was that, uh, your current use doesn't, doesn't involve a cooking, you know, any cooking, so there's no, there's no need for any grease traps or things like that. So, so long as that remains the case, you have all of the licenses from them that you need. If anything changes, we'd have to just revisit. But thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Kavy. The process will be, our Select Board members will ask you any questions, you can share your information, and then we'll come back to the Select Board to see if there are any further questions, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then the Select Board will vote. Thank you. Any comments from the Select? Any comments from the Select Board or questions? Mr. McCrisky.
Okay, what are you going to do for us diabetics that are about 30 pounds overweight? All right? So, and I like cupcakes, but I can't have them, so that's not nutrition. Tell me about your business. It's, uh, I've never heard this coming to town, other than people just selling things out of a store, so it, uh, what sets you apart from me other, other than your smiles? I mean, that's, that's a great thing. I want to go in just a second. Hello, so.
Greetings. My name is Cecilia Champion. I'm the co-owner of Pearl Street Nutrition. This is my co-owner.
I'm Erica Bailey.
And we just opened our doors on June 25th with Senator Walter Timmeltie. He did our grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony. And at Pearl Street Nutrition, that's why we want to be in Stoughton, to provide a healthy, on-the-go nutrition meal. We simply make smoothies and energy beverages that are tea refreshers for the community. And we've been open now for the past three weeks, and the community response has been amazing, and they're happy just to come in our doors, because we're vibrant and bright. And the decor is exactly what they said Stoughton needs.
Okay. What's the menu? What area?
So, a lot of our items are made with water and powder, so, but it tastes like your favorite ice cream, truck flavor. So for the first week, we've been launching ice cream-inspired, healthy smoothies. So if you like a strawberry shortcake, the smoothie tastes just like that, but it's under 300 calories. Also provides you with the protein and the vitamins. It has 21 vitamins and nutrients in the smoothie as well. And also, we have the energy teas, which has B6, B12 vitamin in them, and it gives the, gives you more energy, safe energy with no crash.
Good luck.
Just so you know, you made the diabetic comment. We definitely have diabetic clients, and it's very low in sugar, so it's worth it.
Very good, thank you.
And it probably tastes like a cupcake, Joe.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
People can't believe it's healthy. We say it's their guilt-free.
Yeah. Well, I want guilt-free, sugar-free.
Guilt-free.
I got to test, I got to test the sugar, you know? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Gito, and then Mr. Vice Chair, Kevy.
I see you have eight seats. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so do you serve people who want to take things out as well?
Yes, sir. That's currently what we are, takeout establishment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Vice Chair, Kevy.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations on starting a business. I'm not sure if you've done it in the past. I have not, but it, it looks like a lot of work. And so, uh, so anybody who's willing to, to do that, take the chance, you know, really have to applaud them. So congratulations on that. It's going to, I think this is going to be great for me. Right now, my family, we have a lot of really great ice cream places nearby, as you know. You guys, I think I saw one address in Sharon, so, you know, right on the, you know, we both probably stopped at the same Crescent Ridge at some point. But you can't do that every day, right? So, so it'd be nice to switch it up a little bit. So certainly, I wish you guys the best of luck, and appreciate you picking Stoughton as where you're going to put your business. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrara.
I have, I have the same sentiment. I happened to drive by when I was delivering a machine over to Sharon, and I saw all the fanfare, and I saw Walter out there, and you guys look like you're having a good time, so I wish it, I hope it keeps going. I wish you the best.
I know Walter Timmeltie's like, around this town more than we are lately. She's got to get in an office in this building, you know? Damn.
There could be a lot worse things to happen.
Exactly. I'd love to have the Senator base here. That'd be great. Office hours, it's a great thing. Walk right across the street, deliver a shake, he's all set.
Yeah, just right across the street from Town Hall.
Yes. We've come over here, we've dropped off some samples to some of the staff, so everyone's been coming in. They're our regulars now.
That is so great. That's so great. Wish you the best of luck, and I have actually been there myself. So that's wonderful. Any other questions before we close the public hearing?
I actually, I think you probably should take the opportunity to tell people, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, is that your hours?
Yes, 7:30 to 4:00 PM are our hours.
It says three, it says 3:00 PM here. Good thing I said that.
It's 4:00 PM. We have summer hours now.
Great, so we should be, uh, we should have that changed to 4:00 PM.
Okay.
Or would you be open longer in the warmer hours or anything like that? I mean, while we're here, if we got to change it from three?
Ideally, since we're new, we wanted to get a feel of what the customers would like. And we've noticed more of the rush in the morning and lunchtime, and the evening, it kind of fades out, so we're trying to decide if staying open until 4:00 is too late, we should close at 3:00. So we're just kind, kind of just trial run with the hour.
The business, and this is just my suggestion, the business you're in, you know, if you wanted to stay open until 6:00, which isn't a long use, it's not that type of business, it's going to be a problem. I mean, we should put something like that in, you know, just as a safety net, because if not, you'd have to come back here and amend your license.
Okay, understand, yes.
You know, so I mean, if, if you know you're not going to open up earlier, is this say 7:30?
7:30.
I hope you give chains like that.
We open at 7:30. People are right at the door at 7:30.
Okay, so, so 7:30 to, to 6:00?
Yes, we could do 7:30 to 6:00.
If my colleagues were to accept that as a friendly amendment to the application?
Absolutely.
And this way here, if you decide to stay open a little later, you don't have to come back here and amend the license.
Okay, thank you.
We're not telling you to stay open until 6:00. He's giving you the option.
No, that's why, I can't make it there till about 5:30, so.
Make sure it's open.
So if I call ahead, I might, you know? Okay, oh, great, thank you.
Okay. No further questions?
Questions.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, citizens' comments. Ms. Walsh, please step forward, say your name and precinct, please.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Is the business handicap accessible?
I don't believe it is. But the, the repair, the renovation, Mark, you know that dollar amount. Doesn't, um, there's a dollar amount before handicap accessibility kicks in. It's a small place.
It's a percentage.
Percentage of the total cost.
Yeah.
And that's a big building.
Right.
So it may be Cynthia, and I don't know the-
I, it just, isn't there one step up to get in?
Yeah, I believe it's like two. There's big concrete step, and then you get up on that, and then into the building.
Well, I understand there's businesses in the square that aren't accessible because of the rules.
Right. And the building department did sign off, so.
No, no, I, I think I can open the door and shout.
That's what I would do, Cynthia.
Or call ahead, as, has been mentioned. My comment is, I can't tell you how thrilled I am that the last few applicants you've had for businesses in Stoughton have been women, and the majority have been women of color. And that gives me hope for the future. And it also says something about our community, that these women are willing to put their money where their mouths and talents are, to come to our community. And many of us didn't think we might see this day, but we have, and it's great. And I think it isn't just a color thing, it's also a woman thing, that people of my generation were raised pretty much to serve, and we weren't raised to own or to be the boss, although many have said that I'm pretty bossy. So, good luck, ladies. It sounds like a healthy product, so you probably won't see me. Unfortunately, today I was at McDonald's, so I'm sure that even though I'm a diabetic, there, there are places, I'm, I'm not always a good girl, but good luck.
Thank you. I'll bring you a shake.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh.
Flavoured like a Big Mac.
Any other citizens' comments? I'm looking online now, looking out in the audience. I don't see-
Motion to close.
Second, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
What's that?
Oh, okay. I can't see who that is, but-
Linda Champion?
Oh, okay. Before we close, Ms. Champion, Linda Champion?
Champion.
Hi, hi, thank you, members of the Select Board, and thank you for giving my niece Cecilia Champion an opportunity to present to you this evening. I will say that I feel especially proud of her and her business partner. I am one of your commissioners on the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and it's our mission to advance women. And so I appreciate the comments of the resident. We'd like to see more women and girls get involved in business in Stoughton, to continue to grow and develop, and to bring their talents, as well as their resources, to the community. And I feel that I had an opportunity to attend their ribbon-cutting ceremony. It was the first time I'd seen the store. As to the ADA comment, it, they have the capability, if any order is placed, to actually meet the person right at the front door. There are two or three steps to enter, but an individual who might not be able to make those two or three steps, they can certainly meet them at the door with their order. So thank you so much, and I hope that you guys will welcome them to Stoughton and give them as much chance and opportunity, and I wish them all the success in the world.
Thank you, Ms. Champion. Yes, we concur, and yes, they are welcome. Stoughton is a welcoming community. So we have-
You have the motion.
We have closed the public hearing. I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve. Are we going to vote on the, we got to vote on-
To close?
Yeah, we didn't do that.
Motion to close the public hearing?
No, I, I made it, you seconded it, now we just got to all vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I was, uh-
Go ahead, Joe.
Motion to, motion to approve.
With your change to six o'clock.
Change to 6:00 PM for the hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Good luck.
Moving right along to the next, I'm sorry, common vic license runner pizza. Vice Chair, Kevy, can you read that into the public record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Stoughton, notice of public hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on July 19th, 2022, to consider the application of McCrum Incorporated doing business as Runner Pizza for a common vicular license at 516 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:15 in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dleblanc@stoughton-ma.gov per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Kevy. Are the owners or representative of this establishment in the office or online? If you're in the office, please step forward.
Motion to open.
Second, Madam?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
These are the people I've been waiting to meet. Man, they're lighting Facebook on fire.
Hi, how are you? Please state your name and your relationship with the establishment.
My name is Pascal, and this is Tina. We're the owners of Runner Pizza.
Pull that mic closer to you. There you go.
My, my name is Tina, and I'm Pascal. Our husbands are the owner of Runner Pizza.
Mr. Kevy?
Great, thank you very much. The, uh, the reports we received back from the various towns, town departments have all affirmed that there's no objections. Uh, and, you know, there's, there's no objections. So I have to say, I stopped by Runner's Pizza not too long ago, and I think I made a mistake. This is before the, the whirlwind, because I only got mozzarella sticks, which nobody can mess up. It sounds like there's a lot more on the menu I should have tried, so I'll have to-
I thought a gyro was out of this world.
So I have to swing by again, but that's okay, you're right down the street from me. Uh, yeah, but otherwise, no objections.
Thank you, my fellow board. Any questions? Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Just the opportunity, welcome, and tell us about your business. You know, take the couple minutes. You got a sales opportunity here to hit the probably five or 10 people that are watching us from home. You'd be surprised how many people watch us, but tell us about the business and, you know, and-
Um, so we are a family-owned business. Everything is homemade, our pasta, pizza, the sauce. We do a lot of roast beef that's fresh. So, yeah, everything is homemade, and it's really good. So you guys should try it.
Well, tell me about your roast beef, because I, I read Facebook every day. I don't respond, I don't make that mistake. But, and you've just been getting raved, you, you, there's only a few of us left that'll remember Mermax, but people have said on their Mermax is back. Now, that's a, that's an endorsement.
Yeah, I've heard of a lot of people saying it's close to Mermax, Mermac.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's, we make it fresh every day. We cut it fresh to each, our, each of our customers is cut freshly. So, yeah, everyone likes it.
Good, good. Congratulations, good luck. I think, you know, all of us here remember, everybody knows Peter, too, so I'd like to, if he's watching from home, to wish him good luck as well. Peter is a guy who really did a lot of, a lot of good for the town as well. He helped out a lot of groups and clubs, you know, at different times, so, a great guy. So I hope he's, uh, living on all his millions right now down in the sunny sunshine state.
I hope so.
Good luck.
Mr. Gito, did you have any questions, or?
None.
Okay, Ms. Carrara, or Vice Chair, Kevy?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I threw in my, uh, my thing about the yiddo, so.
You'll be seeing me soon. So, thank you very much. Best of luck, once again. I think you guys are doing a great job, and you're definitely getting the, the word out there, which is, which is very powerful. And, you know, best of luck. I know, I know it's a difficult environment to own a business, probably is always true, but yet this looks like you guys are heading in the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
Oh, yes, please proceed, Mr. Gito.
Many members of my family, younger members, have raved about your place. I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. I have no questions, I just can't wait to visit.
You're welcome, anytime.
A motion to close?
You got to talk to-
Oh, sorry. Citizens' comments. None? Online? Deborah, do you see anyone? I don't, oh. Yes, Ms. Walsh, please step forward, say your name and precinct, please.
I would probably just iterate some of my previous statements about women-owned businesses, the more the merrier, and you also have taken over a business that's had an astounding reputation in the community for years, and it sounds like you're making every effort to either keep up that tradition or improve upon it, so good luck.
Are there any other citizens' comments in the audience or online? I don't see anyone.
Motion to close.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I will now accept a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, bye. Our next agenda item is to review and consider proposed alcoholic beverage licensing regulations. Copies of the draft regulations are available at Town Hall. Vice Chair Kevy, can you read that into the records, please?
Absolutely. Town of Stoughton notes a public hearing. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 19th, 2020, at 8:30. The purpose of this meeting is to review and consider proposed alcoholic beverage licensing regulations. Votes may be taken. Copies of the draft regulations are available at Town Hall. The hearing will be conducted both in person in the Great Hall, 3rd Floor of Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and virtually via Google Meets. It may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for, for public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 71-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dlablonk@stoughton-ma.gov, or on the town website, stoughton.org/select-dash-board, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, acting as local licensing authority.
Motion to open the public hearing?
So made.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The purpose of the alcoholic beverage licensing regulation policy is because we don't currently have one. Once the Select Board approves, it is immediately implemented. It states explicitly and transparently expectations. It puts everyone on equal footing. Since it's a Select Board policy, we, the Select Board, can change anytime we want. What we wanted to get a handle on was the food service. Most in this policy or state law and have, and we want to have something on the books. It doesn't apply to existing license holders, it's only new applications. Most of the policy is a boilerplate, so we consulted with our town council to develop it. It reflects the direction we want to go. So, how would my fellow board members like to proceed? Because you've reviewed it, any comments or edits? Mr. McCrisky?
Madam Chair, and I guess this is a little bit of a segue where I can throw a shout-out to Trish Shropshire, our IT Director, who, as we know, we've dealt with an issue of some policies that we can't put our hands on. So, speaking with the town manager and with Trish Shropshire, Trish was good enough to go back into the server for a couple hundred years and dump a bunch of stuff into multiple folders on the policies and procedures. So, what I'll be doing, with the work I've had this week, and just haven't had time to get to that yet, is to start going through those policies and sorting them, whether they are liquor, because some of us may remember, we had a policy like this before, and it was in, you know, transition between town managers that all of a sudden a big bulk of this stuff went missing. So, I'm, again, thankful to Trish that she really went above and beyond to get that stuff. Now, it just goes in, I'll do the first sort, and then I'll send an email out to everybody, they can look at what's out there for those policies, and we may end up having to go. The next step is, you know, digging into minutes of meetings, and it's amazing what you do and what you find out when you read somebody's minutes. So, that would be able to back up some of these things as well, so, like I said, I haven't even, I looked at two folders, and it's probably going to take a day each just to go through those, so you really got a lot of stuff, so. But, again, the one that I'm reading here, I'm okay with everything here, because it reminds me of what we had in the 90s and the early 2000s, that we did have a policy. So, when somebody said, "What is a restaurant?", we knew what the restaurant was, you know, and somebody would point that out. So, when somebody comes in with a menu of potato chips and, you know, a couple packaged things that go into a microwave, that's not what's considered a restaurant, and a restaurant is very clear, that it's a sit-down, prepared meal. So, we've, we have these licenses, I think this is the time, because we do have extra licenses that we got just because of the population, and until Attorney Winess suggested this, I was ready to make a motion to return half of those licenses to the ABCC, because unfortunately, we're faced with, and this is a great thing that it's happening now, we're forced to act within 30 days of somebody applying for a license. If we don't, they automatically get it. So, with that, you know, this is the time to do it, and I support this, and we'll be voting for it in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Do my fellow board members have any comments and questions? Mr. Carrera, yes?
Are we going to go through this and add where we think something should be added, or are we going to wait till Joe brings it?
This one, Scott, I think is ready to be voted. If, you know, the idea was, while we got it, is just to have that time. If you haven't had time to look at it...
No, 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 I did go through it, and I had like three, three addendums to...
Fire it out.
See if they could be added, if you thought of...
What's the page number and what's the item?
Please, we are open and receptive to your comments.
Because I did this once before, and it, and it went wasted.
Well, once, what we can do is approve your edits, once we hear them and we all agree, that is, and we can make this subject to revising the regulations that's here. So, we're open and receptive to your edits. What page? Why are you looking for that?
Actually, it starts on page two, where it says...
Page two?
Definitions, and nowhere in there does it delineate the name "tip certification", and that should be in there that describes what tip certification means, because when I go to another page, it's, it's gonna, there's, there's no definition for tip certification, and I think that should be in there. So, if that gets put in there, it says, you know, what tip certification is under definitions.
Under definitions, okay.
And then you move to page five.
Page five?
Under availability, number five, it's at the bottom, it says, "Availability to Regulations", and paragraph B, it says, "The licensee is responsible for ensuring that all employees who work in the public areas of the premises review and are familiar with these regulations and are able to comply with them, as well as other applicable rules and law pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages." And I think we should add in there, "And all must be tip-certified", because you can get somebody who, you know, might know about it, but they were making dough last week, and this week they needed them to fill in here, but they're not tip-certified.
Yes, we will add that language, thank you, Mr. Carrera. Anything else?
And then, the last thing I have is under page six, where it says, "Discretion of the liquor licensing and authority" at the top on, on number six. At the end, it, it reads, "As noted above, the license is privileged, not a right. The LLA has broad discretion in determining whether to issue a license and may deny any application because of granting said application would not be in the public interest. Even if the license could be lawfully granted, for example, the LLA may deny the application if it determines granting said application would not be in the public interest because there's already adequate number of establishments in the surrounding area, and where the public cannot obtain alcoholic beverages." And then I think there should be in there, too, that they have the right to regulate the hours of operation in the area for the betterment of the public. Like, if somebody comes in and, and they were able to slide in, and we don't think they should be opening at 11:00 in the morning or staying open till 1:00 at night in that area, because it might buffer the residential zone, you might be able to limit the time to appease the people who live there and come home to sleep, but it's not enough to deny the application of the person who wants to, you know, fit the area. But I think there should be something in there that says, "We have the right to regulate the hours." Just so if we said something, they go, "Well, when it's not in here." Whether we use it or not, I just thought that it might be something that should be in there.
Good idea, uh-huh.
And that's all, that's all, that's on page six.
Page six, section six.
Section six.
Got it.
However, Brian can fit it in there.
Right. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other edits, comments? While you're gearing up for your next comments and edits, if you would turn to, let me see, what page is that? It's where the fees are located. Page 14, E3. "The applicant shall pay the following fees and costs, all costs, cost of advertising and mailing for public hearing notice purposes, an initial license fee of dollar sign, dollar sign, dollar sign, and a renewal license fee of dollar sign, is listed." To fill in that and to be helpful, I asked Deborah LeBlanc to provide us with our license fee schedule, and at the very top, you can see, for alcohol, it's kind of bolded, kind of highlighted, that's what we would choose from. These are, I guess, protocol practices that we've had in existence for some time. So, we could easily, if you would, if the board cares to move in that direction, we can just use this current fee schedule and insert it into those open places, just so we can fill in the gaps there. Any questions or suggestions?
Good idea, because it should be included in there. If it's a liquor policy, we should have the fees.
Okay. So, that's all...
Want a motion on that?
Yes, please. I'll accept a motion.
I would make a motion that the Select Board add to the draft liquor license policy the following: alcohol, in holder, all alcoholic beverages, $2,205; common victual license, all alcoholic beverages, $1,475; common victual beer and wine beverages, $1,025; club alcoholic, all alcoholic beverage, $825; package store, all alcoholic beverages, $1,525; package store, beer and wine beverages, $1,025. That's the motion.
Can I get a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Mr. Jito?
Were you talking about specifically the BYOB?
Oh, no, I was referring to page 14, section E. Oh, yes, that's the only place that had a fee, a fee schedule required. And there is a, on page, I'm sorry, I was jumping the gun, but, yeah, while you're thinking about that, on page 15, number 13, it was a typo, and that needs to be changed to the Town of Stoughton.
We can add a section, and just call it fees. It doesn't have to fit within the BYOB section. I mean, if anything, it really should have its own...
Online.
Own line, yeah. And just call it fees.
Yes, Mr. Carrera?
Then you could say to an applicant who came in for something different, you say, "Here's this fee schedule on page such and such, and note..."
Mm-hmm. Yes, please. What the, the purpose is, we're trying to get the fee schedule somewhere in this policy. Okay.
Somewhere in this policy, we have to have a license or something like that.
Well, there is, there is talk of that in here. We can, we can, there is a section talking about on 14 BYOB, all right, so...
So, are I, the BYOB, is in, common victual is on, here, and you want to come?
The question I'm asking is, we're looking at the licensing fees, the alcohol licensing fees, which of these fit with the, with the categories that we're talking about for BYOB establishments?
Yes, we need a BYOB function.
And that's the question that I'm asking, and I don't think that we've got to that yet, so...
I would, I agree, I'd look at that as where it's a beer and wine, common victual, is I would probably look for the same fee for a BYOB, because BYOB is going to be something that would be not a restaurant, or it's a restaurant without alcohol.
What about a club?
It could be the club, too, but the clubs are membership clubs, from what I understand, and we may, when we get to that point, need the council to, to really define what that club is, and that is a club by its status as membership, VFW, Ambits, that type of thing, because, as we all know, we have some issues as well, that we've had some of these things that are popping up around town, and it's, that's not what it's called, you know, but some people will think it is. So, what's nice about it is it defines what the club is, and, and that by a membership, so, or an association, you know, Portuguese clubs and so forth, so...
So, what would you suggest, Mr. Jito?
I don't have a suggestion.
Okay.
I, I just know that we need to fill it in with some number, and I don't know what that number is.
I would make the motion, we fill it in at 1,025, to be consistent with the other beer and malt.
Can I get a second on that? That is on the... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Me, too.
Thank you. So, now, accepting a motion for the overall policy with the edits that were stated or indicated and, or recommended by...
Did you get something else in here with a definition?
That's what I was going to ask council to look at that, because I... Well, I would, I would vote that we send it to council at this point and ask him to make the edits, including, and then come back to us, and we'll vote the policy if it's, if, that's what I would think we'd do. Yeah, okay. Hey Lou, four, five for five, Lou, five for five, we're agreeing tonight.
I guess we're not voting on the policy.
Council that sent it to us, okay.
Adopt it, send it to council for review, get it back to us.
If the Select Board members have no other comments for right now, any citizens' comments? Yes, Ms. Walsh, please step forward, say your name and precinct, please.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. I think town, town council should investigate, too. It seems to me that somewhere in my 39 years as a town meeting rep, we banned BYOB in Stoughton.
I know there is a BYOB option that's outlined in state statute.
I know, but town meeting voted not to have it in Stoughton.
Does that allow us to supersede state law?
I don't know, I mean...
I would bet not. We should look into it.
One of the suggested rules was...
Well, that, we should include that.
The good of the neighborhood about ours, but the, the state law is, if you grant a license, it's good from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM or midnight, no matter what.
Well, BYOB actually is defined in here, less than that, so...
Yeah, well...
But I think we need the clarification, I agree.
Someone needs to check. I mean, I think it was back in the 80s, the original bylaw, the liquor bylaw, was written by a committee that I was the chair of in the 80s, and then we did it again in the 90s, and it seems to me that one of... And it seems to me that one of our suggestions was to ban BYOB, and town meeting agreed. So.
That's a good thing, actually. But, yeah.
The rule, the rule of thumb is. You probably have the minutes.
I know, do you have, Cynthia? Lou just said you probably have the minutes. Do you have those in one of your little books somewhere?
No, I don't do that at the town meeting.
Okay.
Through you, through you, Ms. Chairman, to Joe. You, you can strengthen state law, you can't weaken it.
Well, that's, that's my point.
So that's the only thing.
That's my point. You know, if the state says you can, but I agree, it's worth, we've got to look at it.
Oh. Mr. DeFaleese, please step forward, state your name and precinct. Hello?
Ed DeFaleese, precinct six. I just want to make a comment. I think the town of Canton has, has had, maybe it's only one, but I know they had one in the center, Bringing Your Own Booze. And I believe it was the Japanese restaurant that was there for some years. It's recently moved to another location, but it's still in the center. So my suggestion would be to maybe contact Canton, like, someone like Selectman Connolly, because I think he's been in Selectman for about fifty years or so. I mean, he's been in Selectman forever. Maybe even a casual call to him might give some information, how they dealt with it, and if they had any problems with it or not. I don't think they've had any problems with it. But, you know, we have a neighbor in town that has had, that has had the experience of that type of restaurant. So it might be worth, you know, a call to Canton to see how they, how they allot it, and what restrictions, all that kind of stuff, and if they had any problems with it. Think that'd be very helpful.
Thank you, that's such a great idea. Yes, it's nice to be in line with your surrounding community, but.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's just for information, because that might help you all to decide whether you want to do it here or not.
Thank you. All right. Any other citizens' comments? I can't see if anyone's online that has their hands raised. Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Was, oh, someone's hand was raised? I can't read the name. Oh, okay, that's Delores. Hi, Del. Hi, Delores.
Hi there. I'm, I'm, can you hear me okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. There were several edits made to the policy that I was not able to keep up with. I don't know if Deborah has those, but Mr. McCrisky read, you know, quite a few edits. They went by too fast. So I just wanted to alert you to that. I don't know if you're going to repeat them.
Oh, Ms. Stanton, I will repeat them unless Ms. LeBlanc can repeat them.
I think we're all set. I think it was Mr. Carrera that had several suggestions.
No, no, Mr. McCrisky gave a whole lot of dollar amounts.
I read, I read, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just read yours.
The fee schedule I did not get. Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Motion to close the public hearing?
I made that.
Okay. Have we voted? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Make a motion that we approve the, accept the policies as presented and to forthwith turn them over to Attorney Winner with the, with the, you know, the corrections that we would like to have added, the amendments, add additions, whatever we want to call them, and that it be brought back to us as, you know, timely manner. And that he pays special attention to the section on BYOB, on the uses, and to actually look and see if that's a, I would be curious to see if he says that's a high or a low fee. I think it may be spot on, but, because it does mirror the other one we have. So that is my motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. And moving right along to the next item. Okay, that is Stoughton Media Access Corporation, SMAC. They have two open, two-year positions available.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
I would like to make a motion that we hold off on these appointments until such time we can talk about SMAC, you know, and their operation. The board of directors that are there now can continue with that. It's just like the contract that we have with SMAC that needs to be renewed. So it's not, doesn't change anything right now. The two incumbents would continue their duties until such time that we can review information on SMAC's operation. There's a lot of information, and these two big stacks, a pile of paper here in front of me, are that information. I don't think we have suitable time right now to get into all this information. So I would be looking to put an issue on the agenda so that we can talk about that and have a suitable amount of time.
Second.
Are we going to discuss this before we take a vote, or Vice Chair Cave? I see Vice Chair Cave, he had a question.
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I, I phrase this with a couple of folks, but I've got some concerns about just the, you know, whether or not we actually have the authority to do this, to make this appointment. Because this appointment seems to be, the foundation of it is actually in our agreement with SMAC, as defined in their contract. But the contract with them is no longer open, right? It's closed as of 2020. And from what I'm reading in the contract, not having an active contract, I'm reading legalese. This is like, I'm reading like a second language here. Like, I'm trying my best to kind of interpret this. But it seems that the closing of the contract terminates a relationship with, with SMAC, and would then not be a basis for us to make any appointments to a board that may not actually exist technically. I would just like to get some, like, real clarification about exactly what the current state of SMAC is, both, you know, legally with regard to their, our contract with them, what our role is in this. And, you know, I'm aware of some other additional concerns that I think are, you know, just as fundamental, for which I would like to have some real clarification as well. So I agree with, with, with Mr. McCrisky, and would only ask that, you know, if, while we're in this process of getting it, I think it would be helpful to take it, you know, a step further and maybe, you know, actually generate some sort of documentation, reports on, on what the current state of SMAC is. If you'll allow that as a friendly amendment.
What is the friendly?
You couldn't hear?
I only heard part of what you said.
Okay. So, yeah, so I said a couple of things, so.
Did you see the condensed version of that?
Yeah. So our, our ability to appoint a member to the SMAC board right now seems to be determined by the contract that we have with SMAC. Like, inside the contract, it says, like, the select board points, right? That's in the definition of cable advisory committee. The definition is, the select, sorry, the Stoughton Cable Advisory Committee as appointed by the Board of Selectmen, right? This contract went from 2015 to 2020. So that was two years, ends two years ago. When I read through the terms here, under the heading termination, it says, "This access agreement and/or any subsequent designation or extension thereof made under authority of this access agreement shall be terminated upon the occurrence of any of the following events." And item C is the expiration of the then-current term or any extension of the term of this access agreement in the event that the municipality, in its sole discretion, has failed to or has elected not to re-designate SMAC as its access provider within the meaning of that term as employed in its cable licensing. So, so far as I understand these sentences, and I'm not going to lie, I'm not a hundred percent on it. I, I'm, I am a little bit worried about what this, our actual current relationship is with the SMAC board. And before making an appointment, I would like to understand that I actually have the authority to make an appointment to it.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
I can clarify that. Is the current, you're correct, the current agreement between the town of Stoughton and SMAC has been expired. But it's like anything, there's no wording in the contract, and I did speak with legal counsel about this, okay? Because I got to that line as well. Okay, so just like the contract will continue because we're allowing it, we essentially, if we wanted to tonight, could cease the contract. I don't think that's a good idea. Okay? So it'll continue, SMAC operates as they are, the board of directors stay the way they are. And then we can, we look at the process to go into negotiations, if we so choose, for a successor agreement, which I'm open to. But again, there's a lot of information, a lot of questions, a lot of things that are not being done that were in these agreements. Okay, and again, if, if, if we ended up going that way, I'm prepared to, you know, to bring up a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Right? I requested, and I went through five years of minutes, about thirty questions that I put and requested information. Some I got answers to, some I got nothing. You know, I highly question some areas that are contained in the bylaws that haven't been done at all in the last five years. So that's what I want to do, because there are going to be people that are going to, you know, put the crosshairs and say, it's me, but it's not me. It's the information that's contained in these documents that I question. And I'd rather have a different process. So this will allow everything to just go on the way it is for the time being. Nothing changes, everything goes the same way. And I'll make a motion when I get the additional information that we do, I'm thinking of something of a full audit. Because they do a great job going through their financials, they present it to the board. But that's not an audit. You know, there was an operational audit. I have the results of the operational audit. And there's a lot of questions in that as well. So I think if we're going to do that, and I don't have, although, of course, this is politics. This, everything's politics. Well, it is, because everything we do from this table is politics. It's just getting the operation to run the way it's supposed to. So it's servicing the ratepayers. And right now, I don't think we are servicing the ratepayers the way we should be. So that's where we just allow things to, to go out, stay the way it is, nothing changes. We come back, look about doing a review of, you know, a full audit. You know, like, we go through here in the town.
Sure.
Taxpayers money.
I'm in.
Operational as well. And then we talk about a successor agreement, based on the information we have in front of us.
Sorry to cut you off there. I, I agree with you. I think that we, we, you understand the status of the contract. And if we're starting to do one, I think we have to have a, a very strong understanding of, of, you know, as we're entering a new agreement, we have to have, have, have an audit, have an idea, have a good idea of what's transpired over the last, what would be, seven, seven years.
This goes back to the first contract that was written ten years ago. So, and there's a way to just follow that trail.
And I, I regret having to string anybody along who's looking for an appointment here. I apologize to all of you.
Well, then nothing will happen. The existing people stay there until such time this board, who has sole authority to make this decision, makes a decision if they choose.
Yeah.
So we're back to the motion.
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 You did it without the friendly amendment, is that correct?
What, well, the friendly amendment was answered. Because he was asking for that, so.
I understand that. I mean, I, I agree with your, your view on that. I mean, we just had the people before us last week. And, and we're treating them as though they were an existing organization.
Well, they are. They are, because we're.
I agree with you.
Right, because we're continuing that. We're not going to change anything.
That's fine. You and I are in agreement.
Wow, another one. That's a great thing, Lou.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we were not thinking that, well, maybe this isn't even existing. That's the part that I wanted. There was a motion, and there was a friendly amendment made, and then there was a discussion about the friendly amendment. And I wanted to make sure that we were back to the original part. That's all I was doing.
To be clear, Vice Chair Cave, you withdrew your amendment because you received your answer.
Yeah, or I may have misunderstood. I think it's wrapped into what you've already laid out. So if, if, if it was just to have an examination of the contract, its current legal status, as well as just more information about the, the operations over the last several years, to kind of, because we're about to enter into a new contract, we need to know what the current state is. So if that's all wrapped in there, then there's no, there's no purpose for an amendment.
Well, my question is, what's the timeline? Are we trying to have this audit, review?
Well, we've had the license lapse for pretty close to two years now. All right? So I don't think another few months or whatever is going to make a big difference. I mean.
So you believe this is going to take a couple of months?
I would think easy that, easy that. Okay? But the job's getting done right now. I'm not going to say it's not, but I can argue that it can be a lot better. So I think that's what we're going to have to do, is to find out who we, we get to do this. You know, and move from there.
Auditing is what you're referring to? Who we're going to get to audit?
Exactly. And there are people that have been in this business as consultants. There was a lady that I met years ago, she's in Plymouth, but I know she's retired. I don't know if she, if she still does this, but she was.
Put out an RFP.
We can do that too. We can do that too. So I think that would be, you know, having somebody help us do that, to get out, to make sure we've got the right thing. But just an RFP, just put the contract out, what it is, what they do, what the contract says, and their bylaws, and all that. And, you know, you basically went and audited the whole thing. So, so, okay.
Any further discussion?
On the original motion.
On the original motion? No additional questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Moving right to the next agenda item, which is update on the Community Paradigm's permanent town manager search. Vice Chair Cave?
Okay, so currently, the Community Paradigm is looking for us to, to sign off on the profile that they've created. They've incorporated all of the comments that I'm aware of in my last conversation with them, from, from Mr. Gito, Ms. McCrisky, Ms. Roberts, myself. I think they're still waiting on Mr. Carrera's. Have you, have you had a chance to get in touch with them about any of these? Okay.
Not, not yet.
Okay.
I, I have the stuff put down. I'm going to see if I can get it scanned in, and then see what they do with it.
Okay. So the, so right now, if we can get that to them and get that incorporated, say this week, if you can get that over to them, they can incorporate it, we can get a new version, hopefully by the end of this week, which we can then vote on. If we, if we meet next week, we can vote on it then. This sets us back a little bit, but it, but it's not something, I don't think that's something that we can all overcome. We'll just have to make it up either by going out a further week or, or expediting something along the way. But, you know, but I think a week or two behind our, our original timeframe.
Or you suggest and advise Chair Cave that we meet sometime next week, which is off schedule for us? I'm open and available if that's what you're suggesting, but I just wanted to know.
On the one hand, I would really like to, and I hate to bring us in on, on days we don't have to be here. On the other hand, I, I think it's a point that we move this along. So if we're able to get, assuming we can get all the comments over to, to Community Paradigm in the next couple of days, and they're able to turn around a version of it, that might be too quick for them to turn around some of the comments. I know you're very thorough, so if there's a lot to change, like, it might take them a little while to make those changes.
It's, it's not a lot. It's just, there's just bullet point.
Okay, yeah, then they might be able to plug it in kind of quick, we get a new version.
Will we get copies of everybody's comments that were sent in? Or is that not going to be open to each of us?
I don't see why that couldn't be. Unless people don't want their comments shared, but I.
No. Well, didn't they combine it all and make one list?
I think so.
So we all have that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the, what does you call that? The professional profile. So we all have that, and we have Lou Gito's comments, and that were incorporated in.
Mr. Carrera was looking for like, a sort of a list of like, who, who had which requests.
Yeah, what, what each person said, that's, that's, that's just, that's an open process.
No, yeah.
You have the right to ask for that.
Yeah, I mean, all of our, we've come through our emails, we're all, like, all public documents.
I'm not an email guy, I told you.
So thus far, they've received emails, and those are all public documents. So there's no, certainly no secrets, just whether or not somebody's actually compiled.
No, I just wanted to see if I'm just, you know, spinning my wheels and it's stuff that's already been done or what.
Fair enough. Would, uh.
I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to share the comments that I made. I, I sent them to Paradigm because I thought that's what I was supposed to do. I'd be happy to share them with anybody else, but, but they go beyond the, the, the long list of what we want this person to walk on water like. So, I mean, they go back to, to some of the basic, this is what the town is, and so on, and, and so, I, I don't know.
I mean, I was a little overwhelmed when I first saw their position statement, that it was like, a lot of it's not what I wanted. It's, it's like, pull the folder out, pull this out, yep, this is what we did before. I've got a guy for you, or a girl. It's like, it's, when, I feel as though when you give something away to somebody, it, it either gets, yep.
Well, I agree with you, Ms.
Because it's too easy to do that.
I agree with you.
If they took all the comments, put them in a folder, in a, in a package form, and distributed to each of us so we knew what each one was, was doing, then it might be something that went, oh, yeah, I should have thought about that, or, you know what I mean? It's.
Yeah, I can, I, I'm, I'm sure all this stuff exists, like, I just, I didn't ever thought to compile it, so I, I'll put it together, I'll get it to everybody.
I, I'll say it again, I said it before. I think we should have sat together, talked amongst ourselves, whether it's open or in there or whatever, and found out what the qualities were that we wanted amongst us, and where we were going, whether former town managers or back town managers that had left had good qualities and we could have incorporated them into them. I, I don't want what we just lost. I'm sorry, I, I mean, if you wanted to do that, you should have thrown four hundred thousand at the person who was leaving, and maybe they would have stayed. That person already had her feet out the door.
Okay.
Jobs don't just get handed out in two weeks. It's a lengthy process as we are going through. You think Sturbridge went through two weeks and they pulled it through the door? I'm going to say no. This is why I wanted to talk amongst us to see what the qualities were that we saw in somebody, what they could be, and how, how do you bring it forth? I think the next person should have a little bit of knowledge about the state of Massachusetts' legalities.
That's a, that's a great comment. When I was interviewed, I didn't put anything in writing, it was just a verbal interview. I don't know if anyone else went through that same process. When I hear that Mr. Gito had a list, did you also have a verbal interview with Paradigm? What's his name, Sharon?
Sorry, Mr. Gito, could you turn the mic on? Apologies.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me repeat. When I found we were going to be interviewed, and I knew what basically the questions were going to be, I sent material directly in so that it was clear what I was interested in, and then we had a, an interview after that because I thought it would make it easier for them to know what my thoughts were, rather than my answering randomly some random questions, because I thought this was sort of an important activity. And then we got the draft back, the first draft of the, the, what was supposed to be the announcement, and I looked at it and I said, "My goodness, there are some things here that are incorrect, and maybe some things that we should be emphasizing, and the seventeen ninety-two history of Stoughton may not be nearly as important to somebody as what we're doing." So, I sent that back to them, and I haven't heard anything back on the announcement, and I also suggested that we take a look at that long list of things that we say we want, and they're all these, gee, I'd like to have a person with these qualifications. And I said, "We ought to put another column in there that says, 'As measured by,' so at least we knew, you know, you, you think something's pink? I think it may be red," although I'm colorblind, and so, how do we, how do we begin to measure what it is that we said? And are we, in fact, overlapping a lot? Can we win all that down to something that's realistic? So, those are the kinds of comments that I made and sent them back. And I did that a while ago, and I'm not sure when I get the next package back, that, what it's going to say. And I'm not sure that we're going to be able to say, "Oh, we all agree on that," without seeing it and knowing how perceptive they were, and, you know, maybe, maybe some talk between them and us might be helpful at some point in time. I don't know. But that's, that's where I am to answer your question.
Yeah, I mean, to my view, I just wanted to get everyone's comments incorporated, and then we can, like, start negotiating things, you know, and work, work out to see if there's things that we need to add in or take out.
Lou said the same thing, basically I said. Maybe he said it more eloquent than me, I was maybe too abrupt in it, but when I see something that says, "The new town manager will have the right to disassemble and, and change and, and tear apart departments," how do you, how do you, how do you think I'm thinking about the people in this town hall? What's this person going to come in? Tip the place upside down just because it says in the charter they can do it? Maybe there should be a line in there that just says, "Follow the charter. The town has a strong charter." Don't put stuff in there that drags somebody in that thinks they're going to wield a sword and just tip the place upside down. That's not what I was looking for. That's why I didn't know how to handle these people. I've, you've done it this way, I, I, I've done it different way. I've done it eyes-on. In the room, you know who you can read. Lou's basically said the same thing. I'm looking to see what my wording came out as, and, and that's why I'm a little hesitant to put mine out there. It's easy for everybody to see mine because, you know, Joe's going to scan mine, he's going to have a copy of it, anybody will have a copy of it, but not me. I don't have everybody else's. So, I wanted to sit together and, like, try to troubleshoot what we were doing, and I don't want to say we're moving too fast, but I don't want to be rushing to, to get something that we're not going to be happy with just because we're trying to fill the slot. I'm not panicking.
Mr. Carrara, would you feel comfortable seeing everyone's comment? We have a separate meeting, just that one agenda.
Lou kind of let me in on his comments. I'm not saying, give me what you said.
Right.
But the conversation we're now having puts me a little bit more at ease because I, I don't want to say I'm on the defensive, but I am.
Well, let's have a conversation.
I'm not too happy with Community Paradigm. They, they seem to be jumping the gun a little bit too quick, like, they, you know, okay, who's, which is the next town we got to work with now?
We're targeting a six-month, six-month process here, like, nobody can say that this is being rushed, or that we're jumping, anybody's jumping the gun. This has been taking, it's going to take a very long time. Step one is, let's just write up a document that says.
So, what are, what are the next steps in the process? Are we going to?
They have, they have the document that they sent to us like it was ready to go out the next day. Two hundred thousand, just pay anybody two hundred thousand.
No.
So, what I'm hearing, the next steps are, we're going to get everyone's comments and then share it with everyone, and then move forward from there, and have a discussion, like a roundtable discussion?
Yeah, let's get everyone's comments into the, I mean, there's a document's been created, everyone put their comments in, and then we can, we can start negotiating what we care about, what we don't care about, if we want to change or not change it.
That's been out there for a while, too, about the comments, so.
So, I, I mean, I think we're going to have to just set a drop dead date where we say, like, we are going to be voting on this as of this date. It could be next week or the following week, but whatever comments have been received, like, that's what we're going to work with.
Okay.
That's my view.
So, we have, next week, we can talk as a roundtable, then the following week, we can vote on it. Cool. I see you had an affirmative, so, okay, great. Thank you for that update. Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. Moving to the next, oh, consent.
What did you just say?
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Gito. Next is Vice Chair Cavie is going to talk with Paradigm to get everyone's comment and share it with everyone, so we all know what each other said. Then we're going to meet, have a roundtable discussion, I guess to prioritize. One thing that Mr. Carrara said is that he was looking for someone that had, that's strong in mass law, and as an example, so let's kind of prioritize that list. Basically, goes back to what you said. So, more to come. But we first, the first trigger is, we, we're relying on Vice Chair Cavie to aggregate everyone's comments and share it amongst us. That's the next step.
I, I'll send my comments to all of you if, if, if that's helpful. I mean, that's not a problem for me to do.
That'd be great, yeah.
And, and if anybody else wants to do the same thing, that's fine, too. My hope is that Paradigm will begin to take all the comments that we have and rewrite what they've, what they've put together.
They have, they have. We already have a, a next version, but we, we do have a new, new version, but it only.
We do not.
It only incorporates four out of the five select board members' comments, and so, we were, I was waiting to receive all five comments before we, I produced a new version.
Has Paradigm redone that?
Yes, to incorporate all the comments of.
Well, why don't we have it?
Because they're still waiting on the comment, some additional comments.
Well, perhaps there would be another strategy that we could incorporate or entertain that would say, "We will all get the redraft, and we will incorporate the lost positions when we get them," as opposed to waiting until the last person gets something in. I mean, basically, if one person didn't get anything in, you could filibuster the thing until two years from now.
Or we can all just agree that we're not going to push them forward.
And that's not terribly helpful.
Yeah, we can just agree that we're not.
So, I would like to see as soon as possible, the next iteration.
Yeah, I'll forward it to you right now.
Thank you.
As soon as this, we're done talking, but it's just going to be, I mean.
I just want to, for the record, I believe I told you, I wasn't submitting comments.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Because we're just adding more and more and more, nobody's going to attain what we're looking for.
Yeah.
You know?
You and I agree. We need to take a look.
Well, I loved your comment, you know, I mean, these, we're not going to get somebody that's going to walk on water. I mean, it's, we're going to, we're going to know, us five are going to know who we're looking for based on the candidate pool, and we can write whatever we want to write and write a, a definition of how to walk on water, but we may not get that person.
I was.
I'm comfortable with the comments that are in there. I think there's enough there right now for, to get a good candidate pool.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's what he said.
Then we can, next week, can simply vote on it, make whatever changes we want as the last, last draft, and, and then vote on it. I'll, I'll forward this document right this very second, you'll all have it in your boxes.
Excellent, excellent.
I'll put Ms. Blank on the, on the email.
He said.
He's going to send it.
He said he'll send it.
Right now.
Right now.
But there was something else that said we're going to vote on it?
We're going to vote on it because both Mr. Carrara and Mr. McCrisky said they're not adding any more comments because we have enough comments, and this is a person, all those comments equal a person walking on water. Okay.
Wow, all I got to do is say no, I changed my mind, I want to write comments, and I can get another two weeks out of this process.
We're not trying to do that, Mr. McCrisky.
Hey, sometimes it's nice just to, you know?
Yeah, just stir their pots.
That's right.
Oh, oh, are we ready to move to the next agenda item?
I'm good.
Okay, we're all good now, okay. Consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull the agenda item?
Chair, if I can.
Yes.
Gentlemen in the hall, are you here for a consent agenda item, or are you just watching? Yes.
Yes.
Present on the Canton School Street.
What?
I wish I had asked this before. We don't have anything on the agenda for Canton School Street. What were you looking to talk about?
Update presentation on the intersection. You're asking a comment tonight?
Who, to represent someone?
Yes.
Who?
Sorry, it's not on our agenda.
I apologize if you've.
Is that the one with, we needed that backup information and, in writing, and the sign off from you, Mr. Tisdale?
It's just a presentation that we're going to do, we were planning to do it your next Board of Slaughter meeting.
Okay.
PC agenda was full this time.
Oh.
So, if that was miscommunicated, we apologize, but unfortunately, Craig went to Florida this week on a one-way, one-way ticket, his father passed away, so there might have been a mis, miscommunication.
Wow, sorry about that. I, you know, I saw you sitting there, and I'm looking, and sometimes you get to know when people, issues that are there, and I said, "Well, I see this water one, we're going to be voting, maybe it's them," you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
If we can, Mr. Town Manager, if we can make that right somehow for these gentlemen, you know, that come down here and sat here for three hours, their time.
Yeah, sometimes people pass away, and you can't control that.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, but, no, that's, that's sad as well, I didn't know.
We apologize. Craig's wearing three hats right now. Things have been shifting around a little bit, so there's probably a miscommunication on our part, we apologize, big time. You guys have been great, so.
Okay, all right. Keep us posted on that.
All right, sorry, Zach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, let's move right along to, we feel sorry that that happened, so.
Actually, yeah, if you could, I didn't know that either. If you could pass on to, to Craig on passing, I'm very sorry to hear that. Yeah, he's, he's a good guy, right? His family's in, make thoughts in for us.
The next is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Um, yeah, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to close or adjourn from our open meeting. Is there a motion?
Are we going to go into second?
Yes, I'll.
Then we better not.
Okay, we'll go into executive session, and we'll adjourn there. We will not go back to our public forum. Can I, oh, I'm sorry.
Three reasons why we're going into.
Yes, please, uh-huh. To discuss strategy for negotiation with non-union personnel pursuant to GLC Mass General Law C thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, police chief contract, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the fire union, patrol union, police supervisors' union, DPW union, dispatch union, professional administrative union, labor union, town hall associates pursuant to GLC thirty A S twenty-one A three, and to approve executive session minutes June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
If I may respectfully request that the three police items be taken last, as I will be recusing myself from participation in that process as a result of my son being a member of the Stoughton Police Department, Patrolman's Association. So, I would like to take part in the rest of them, so if we can do the police last, I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. We will take that out of order. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Carrara, I'm just. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mc, Mr. Carrara, I'm just.
We got to, we got to straighten out one thing, because it's improperly in, in this executive session material. There is no town hall associates. I'm going to say it again for the last time. It is THIA, which is the Town Hall Employees Union. Unless they voted, and this board's approved it, when I wasn't here to change, there is not town hall associates. So, right now, it's improperly before you.
So, it's town?
It's THIA, Town Hall Employees Association.
Yeah, because I did, it was a typo. We, I did see some emails going back and forth, correcting that, too. So, yeah, you're right.
I said it the last time. I just.
Yeah, you did.
I'm not, I'm not being, you know, it's, it's a union thing, and we're going into executive session.
So, we will not discuss it in executive session. What we, in executive session, under Section B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the fire union, patrol union, police supervisors' union, DPW union, dispatch union, professional administrative union, library union, pursuant to GLC 30AS21A3. Everything else remains the same. Thank you, Mr. Gito. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time.